I will call this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. There is a presence of a quorum. The meeting has been called and duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We will now go into executive session. Thank you. We are reconvening from executive session to handle a little action that we need to handle coming out of there. One thing that was on our agenda was to consider the appointment of a candidate for single-member District Six, which is an unexpired term. There will be an election on that term coming up in May, and so we interviewed a couple of candidates for that position, and we do have a little action coming out of there. So, do I have a motion on that specific agenda item?
Mr. President, I move that the board appoints Lindsey Harrison for the open, single-member District Six position until the next election.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. I want to congratulate Ms. Harrison on a good interview and every candidate that we did speak to. We will now go back into executive session and be out in approximately 45 minutes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are reconvening from executive session again. I do not believe we have any public participation today, so we're moving on to a Tyler ISD Foundation annual report, and I do believe Betsy Jones is going to come speak to us.
Outgoing Executive Director Betsy Jones will now provide the report for the Tyler ISD Exec Foundation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Crawford, and thank you guys so much for letting me come and share a little bit about the foundation. In your packet, on the first page here is just general overview that I've shared with you before. Our mission, which is to inspire learning, enrich teaching, and enhance opportunities for district students, but I like to boil down the work of the foundation as we go out to seek funds in order to grant those funds in meaningful and impactful ways within the district. And so listed there on that sheet are the ways that we typically seek funds and then the way that we typically grant those funds within the district. On the next slide are some details, and just to let you guys know, all of the data that I'm going to be presenting is as of May 31st. Our fiscal year ends at the end of August, just like y'all's, and so there will still be a little bit of movement, but this does represent a very good snapshot of our year so far. And it's been a great year. We are just so thankful that we were able to do so much, really in large part to y'all's leadership, and we appreciate that very much. But to date, our total revenue has increased 20% over last year, and primarily the reasons for that increase were just an overall increase giving across the board. So we had more individual donor giving, more corporate sponsorship giving, and something that I'm so pleased about is that we had a large increase in employee giving this year. It increased 27% over last year to over $50,000, which is amazing that so many of the TISD employees, teachers chose to support the foundation. And then the total number of employees giving also increased to almost 900, which is great. We also received a couple of different donor-specified grants, one specifically from the Ray H. Mar Foundation, which allowed us to give money to the CTC for an augmented virtual welding machine and then to do some additional scholarships. And then we received some other big donations for scholarships as well. Tyler ISD lost a very beloved and longtime teacher in Maria Emma Nun, and many friends and families gathered together to create a scholarship in her honor, which we look forward to awarding for the first time next year. And then what I'm very proud of at the very bottom there is, for the first time in, I think, a very long time, we had 100% giving from the foundation board, 100% giving from all of you up there, and 100% giving from both district and campus leadership, which we're just so excited about and thankful for all of your support very much. On the next page is how we sought to make an impact positively within the district. And so to date, our total gifts to TISD in 2020-21 are a little over $220,000. That's the highest amount we've been able to give since 2009, which we're very pleased about. And from a Grants for Great Ideas perspective, we awarded 29 grants for almost $90,000. Those grants should impact 21 TISD campuses and over 9,400 students, which is great. And then we also had the opportunity to partner with the district through a $10,000 grant for the literacy bus wrap, which we can't wait to see start cruising around town, and then a $5,800 grant for a teen leadership development program, which is being piloted with Avid Juniors here within the district. Scholarships was also great this year. It was our highest number and amount that are in our organization's history, so we were able to do 18 student scholarships for $38,000 and one faculty scholarship for $3,500. And then we also hosted our first scholarship awards ceremony, which was great because it allowed a lot of the donor families and our granting organizations to come and participate in that and really get to meet and see the students that they are benefiting so greatly. We got to do two different special grants as well, one for some COVID support. We were able to purchase some technology to help groups of teachers that weren't included in the first round, and then that welding machine as well. And then we hosted our normal events, Night of Shining Stars. We participated in the Teacher of the Year banquet and the Teacher Retirement Luncheon as well. And then on your last slide here is just, I like to provide you guys with a little historical picture so you can see where we are, and really the foundation is in very good shape financially. Our total assets now are at $969,000. Our total giving to TISD continues to increase, and so it was a very good year for us, and we look forward to another really great year in 2020-2021. And as Dr. Crawford mentioned, this will be my last report to you guys as the executive director, but I just want to thank you all so much for your support and your encouragement and leadership over these past three years. It's been a joy and a privilege to get to serve in this role. So, do y'all have any questions for me about any of this?
Just thank you for all that you've done. We'd like to see you go.
Absolutely. It's been a joy, really. I absolutely loved it, so just looking forward to being a little more available to my family.
Betsy, looking at the past five years, you can see the impact that you've had, and so I know you're going to be really missed. Appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. It's been a joy.
Yeah. I'd say the same. The past year, I had an opportunity to work with you, and you've been very cooperative and encouraging from all aspects and getting some things done, and I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll pile on. I've never heard anything but great things said about you, and that's a testament to your work ethic and your capabilities that, I mean, this job, you knocked it out of the park, so they will miss you. And so, good luck Tyler ISD Foundation in finding a suitable replacement.
They're going to do a great job, and I'll be around to help too, so.
All right.
But thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got the Return of the Shack here, the School Health Advisory Council Annual Report.
Director of Health Services Rachel Barber will be presenting that Return of the Shack report for this school year on behalf of the Shack.
Pump up the word.
School Health Advisory Committee.
Yes. So this year with our Shack, everything was a little bit different because of COVID. We weren't able to meet because of COVID protocols, and we weren't able to bring people on campus, so everything was done virtually. We did still have our four meetings, like is required every single school year, but they were done via Zoom calls. Participation was down. Every meeting had about 10 to 15 members, but it was mostly community members, unfortunately. So, going forward, I've kind of taken the helm, and we are looking for new Shack leadership for next year. I've already sent out a parent interest letter that was sent out in April, and we have already gotten up to between 50 and 60 parent interest emails back, and we have started creating an email list to go out so that we can gauge interests and go ahead and elect new chair and vice chair and secretary positions for next school year, and go ahead and start creating new subcommittees and starting creating topics of interest so that we can start this summer instead of waiting until the fall semester to get those things created. I'm going to start sending that out in the next couple of weeks so that we can get that started. I'm working with the new legislative requirements that had just come out as well, with the new curriculum and then all of the meeting things that will be coming up. So, do you have any questions? Unfortunately, there's not a lot to report because they just didn't get to accomplish much this year. They really want to be able to create yard signs with those at the schools to gauge interest with parents. They weren't able to get that accomplished because of funding resources. So, really, I'm sending that letter out again in August with the parents, and hopefully we're going to be able to get a lot of parent interest and get them engaged and really revamp our Shack program.
Two things before you sit down. One, I should know this, but there's a lot of other things that were piled on top of legislation that came this year. Did the bill pass that allowed them to identify a representative, the board, to identify one representative on Shack?
To appoint.
To appoint. Okay. So that's coming. Y'all usually give us names anyways, but that actually is going to be an obligation now of seven board members, at least here.
I think they have to do at least five.
At least five. But in a district that has five board members or a district that has seven or nine, that has to actually come from them, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're talking every single-member district will be represented on the?
On the Shack.
On the Shack.
Yep.
Okay.
I talked to Brian Hughes. Brian Hughes is the one that wrote that bill, that y'all's state senator. The reason he did it was to have some monitoring from the community on controversial health curricular matters. That was going to be my second question, so I'm not going to ask that second question. I'm just telling y'all why y'all are to appoint someone from your single-member districts because of some of those things that may or may not be stomached in communities in regards to sex ed.
Right.
So, choose wisely, please.
Question in regards to, you talked about sending letters out to the parents. How do you go about selecting parents? What group of people are you pulling from, you know?
It went out to every parent district-wide.
Everyone. I was wondering about that.
So every parent that has, when they register their children, they put an email address in the system, and so it was emailed out district-wide to every parent and employee because everybody has the opportunity to participate. And it's voluntary and open to everyone, and so they can choose to come. And everyone that has responded back to me, I've put their email address and what school their children go to into a spreadsheet and to a contact list, and then that is what I will send out, the meeting information, minutes, and things like that. We'll also have to post those onto the Shack website, which is on the Health Services, there's a link on the Health Services Department website, but that is where we're drawing from. I will say that there are a lot of areas in the district that we're lacking from at this time, but we're going to send it out periodically throughout the summer, again at the beginning of the year, to try to amp it up and really get coverage throughout the entire district.
Just another question in regards to your subcommittees. I was looking at the subcommittees you have listed here, Suicide, Mental Health, Vaping, Bullying, and I know that, didn't we set up a hotline for bullying or something within the district for students?
Yes, sir.
Will they have access to information associated with that to kind of develop some things or?
The committee?
Yeah.
The subcommittees?
Yeah.
Maybe on numbers, but not specific issues?
Yeah. The topic, numbers, the topics?
But obviously, absolutely, that stuff that they work on is going to be those types of things that, I guess, falls under the purview of Shack.
Yes, and those were just topics that they had brought up in the years past, and it was like they wanted to do PSAs to curb bullying and to inclusive-type things, be kind, kindness week, and things like that is what they kind of geared it towards.
And then two years ago, we had a huge vaping initiative.
We did. They did a PSA for that.
Well, we've also had media coverage of THC inside of vapes and the penalties that go along with that. And by the way, legislation did get passed that actually reduces that effective September 1. Is that right, Mr. Brown?
Okay.
From a felony to a Class B, I guess, misdemeanor. So, those things that y'all hear about coming to y'all from the community, we actually can put underneath Shack to let them kind of work on those things as well appropriately. Sometimes we do get some wild cards on Shack that want to do some things that are way out of our purview and out of our world, so usually it's been pretty good, though.
That's our goal. Do you have any further questions?
I think we're good. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a Gifted and Talented update under Continuous Improvement Student Outcomes portion.
So our annual Gifted and Talented update, we've got Dr. Hanson that'll be actually providing that information to the board at this time. Also part of your board training requirements, so check some of that off. Do you get hours for it?
Yeah.
No, this is one of those free trainings that you get that don't count towards your hours?
Right.
That you just get to check that you had that training.
Okay.
So we're checking off a few compliance things today. One is the board training for Gifted and Talented. Another is the annual review of the State Gifted and Talented Plan and how we are doing in the district for that, and I'll show you a few numbers as well, so let's get started. It's super riveting. So Gifted and Talented students, here is the state definition of a gifted and talented student. Exhibiting high-performance capability, possesses an unusual capacity for leadership, or excels in a specific academic field. Just remembering that these are ors, not ands, so that's an important consideration. The state has come out with a new state plan, and they have six primary areas that they want us looking at when we're evaluating the quality of our gifted and talented program. The fidelity of services, the student assessment, the service design, curriculum and instruction, professional development, and community. And I'm going to run through our evaluation. So the fidelity of services basically is what it looks like, is how are we servicing kids and are we doing it with fidelity across the district for all students? The strengths in our district, we found, where our screening process is good, it's consistent, and the identification of GT students is consistent across the district. We do have to look at the equity in the quality of instruction. Like any instruction across the district, some teachers are better than others, some programs are doing better than others at certain campuses, and so we need to improve that, and fidelity to the GT scope and sequence. The student assessment piece, one of our strengths is that our nomination process is clear. Everyone really understands it. We've been consistent with that, and we were able to test more students for GT this year based on different screeners. One of the things we have to address is early identification of students and testing potential students earlier in the year. When we test students is not necessarily very helpful, and we do, when we get to the data, you'll see that we have more students, or we have in the past had more students nominated at some campuses than others because the process was by teacher nomination or by parent nomination, which automatically can create some inequity right there. So we've shored that up. Service design, this is an area where we've actually improved quite a bit. We are maximizing our instructional time more now that the GT services are on campus, and we also, our curriculum is TEACs-aligned. Before, it was project-based and it was based on interest, and we've gone in and made sure that the activities that we're doing are aligned with the standards where the student is, and they just enhance the current curriculum, so it's not something that's completely separate and apart. The areas to address are monitoring the fidelity to that curriculum. We do have a TEACs-based year at a glance. That's new this year. Again, monitoring the implementation of the scope and sequence and collaborative processes for lesson plans, activities, so that we get that equity. We don't have some things happening here and not happening at another campus. Professional development, this year, of course, professional development probably wasn't our strength. We did manage to virtually get all of the teachers to the Taggart Conference and the Depth and Complexity Conference, but what we need to do better, that monitoring piece, is are they using that new information? And I would say this is our biggest weakness this year, is just the community and family involvement. We sort of pigtailed off of whatever the campus was already doing. We didn't have kind of our own GT events, and that's something we certainly could do better at. I do want to let you know back here with the assessment, we have changed how we do that in order to help identify kids. We look at the STAR Renaissance and the M-Class data that I bring to you guys, I know, all the time, and when we have students that, according to that data, they look like they could have some potential, we go ahead and begin to kind of red-flag them in kindergarten as potential GT students regardless of whether anybody nominates them or not. And then in first grade, we test every kid now. We give every kid the COGAT, an IQ test, so that we can automatically begin to look at every student as a potential GT student rather than just students that are nominated. So I wanted to make sure that I address that. We do, when you see our numbers, you will notice that we are still working to bring in more African-American students. That is something that we know has to happen, and we feel like by looking, screening every single first grader, that automatically will help us be able to identify students. So, here are your total percentages of GT students on each campus. Obviously, Byrdwell and Caldwell are magnet schools, so you would expect for them to have a higher number of GT students. Here are your total number of GT students on secondary campuses. Here are your elementary ethnicity breakdowns. Here are your secondary ethnicity breakdowns. And here are your ethnicity breakdowns of gifted and talented students by campus. And these are your secondary campuses. And this was really interesting. It's one of the first, really, years we've been talking about this, and I'm so excited that Ms. Naby pulled this data because, you know, my expectation is that if a student is gifted and talented, I mean, the basic would be that they would do well on STAR. Like, that just has to happen. And so even though the GT program is not about preparing kids for STAR, obviously, it's way above and beyond that. We certainly want to know how our kids are doing on the STAR test. So, this is how our kids did on this year's STAR test, just pure, what percentage performed at that level. This is not an accountability issue. It's just 97% of the third graders in reached approaches. So we would like to see that master's level get higher, especially when you see fifth grade science down there. Obviously, these are our GT kids. We really want to see that get higher. And then our secondary, we certainly want to see our GT kids performing better at meets and masters for our gifted and talented students. These are our high flyers, so we would really expect them to do better. And I just sort of highlighted that whole master's column because we want that to get better. So those are how we'll set our goals for next year. Again, we're not trying to get, you know, it's not all about STAR, but certainly that's a basic expectation, is that your GT kids are doing well in STAR.
It does assess kids.
Yes.
And that's what we're going to have to get back to. You know, we made a living off of that, that we embraced accountability and assessment. We've kind of had a year and a half or two years off of that, and, you know, people ask what's next, and that's getting back to what we made our money. And so, we're not going to be afraid of assessment because after all, it does assess kids and where they are as a mathematician, a reader, a scientist, and a social scientist, so I'm excited about a normal school year coming up for us.
And we certainly expect kids to grow on that STAR Renaissance data. You know, that's one of the reasons we look at growth, because these kids may start off the beginning of the year already at or above grade level, but we still expect them to get a year's worth of growth. And so that's just an important consideration as we begin to pull and analyze that data. So, that is the end. Any questions? That was your training, and that was the district evaluation of the program.
Just to comment in regards to testing every kid, I think that's excellent because I feel like some kids have fallen through the crack, at least I like to think some of them are, you know, in the numbers. So I think that's a great move in testing all the kids in first grade.
Mm-hmm. Great.
Over time, just out of curiosity, y'all might not have the history on it. I don't know how I got into GT. I mean, I remember getting pulled out in second grade saying, you're going to Target. Okay. But as far as the testing every kid, has that ebbed and flowed throughout the years? And have we had different ways of identifying GT and just through different administrations?
So, no, we have a policy and a specific process, and it's in board policy what our GT selection process is. And you can go above and beyond that process, which is what we're doing now by testing every student, but the policy and process that's in board policy says that they are going to be nominated by either a teacher or a parent. And that's probably how that happened with you. Either a teacher or a parent thought, smart kid, let's get him tested. What happens a lot of times is people can sometimes associate high skill level with high IQ level, and there could be students who don't have great reading skills or math skills, not really high skill level, could have a lot of skill gaps actually, and still be GT. And the COGAT does not test skills, so it doesn't test necessarily how good of a reader or writer or mathematician you are. It tests IQ, intelligent quotient. And so like, for example, at Caldwell, though, they also have a fine arts giftedness. That's not something that necessarily happens at all. That's that flexibility that we have for what works for specific campuses, so.
Okay. And that's what we've encouraged principals to do. I mean, you're still taking a test, the COGAT. I don't care if it's, I don't care if it's, if it does measure your IQ skill. There's sharp kids out there at every one of our campuses, and we got to eliminate barriers to get them into GT services.
Correct.
So, I'm not going to make a big statement about that, but we're going above and beyond than just a parent or teacher nomination to get you to a standardized test. It's normed, though, right?
It's normed, right.
Yeah.
And we also have anecdotal, so we have people going in and just monitoring those kindergarten classrooms and pre-K classrooms. The circle also, that's an important thing, the thing they do in pre-K, it's a predictor of giftedness regardless of skill level. So those kids, we automatically are watching in kindergarten to see if anecdotally they're showing giftedness, and then we're watching and watching and watching so that we can get them into gifted even if they don't like make all the numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a budget presentation for the 21-22 school year.
Budget presentation for the 21-22 school year is part of the cycle of budget that we go through every year. Now, summertime is whenever we're preparing for next year. We've got our 20-year-plus Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Tasha Bjork, will provide us our?
Did you go blank?
I did. Well, I wanted to call you Tricia Bjork. Tasha Bjork will now provide y'all a glimpse of the budget.
Okay. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint, and I'll tell you, if you have the agenda packet, I'll tell you where you can look in detail or you can just go with the PowerPoint. So our revenue sources are state revenues around 37%, local property tax 61%, and then we have SHARs, which is federal 1.6, and other federal 0.3. So last year, our state was around 40. So last year, our state was around 40, and local was 58. So there's been a shift again because our values continue to go up. But the detail for our revenues are on page 16 in the agenda. Our state formula revenue is a little different than usual because of COVID. We had a decrease in student attendance, and I base the ADA for this next year on this year's ADA, but I raised it a little bit, wanted to be conservative. So that caused a $1.8 million decrease in state funding. And then when your property values go up again, you lose state funding, and that was 2.27 million decrease in state funding. So we have a net decrease in state funding of around 4 million. Now, property values, if you go to page 17 in the agenda, our values are up 5%, but the legislature only allows for 2.5% increase. So we're going to have a tax rate decrease from 9.9551 to 0.9374. Now, that 9374 will not be, we won't be notified until mid-August, till we have the final budget workshop. But it'll be pretty close to that number. It may be a little higher because a lot of times the values go down after they do all their appeals and that type of thing. But the 2.5% increase in values that we have access to is an increase of 2.73 million. And then just basic miscellaneous revenue increases or decreases, that's just a listing of them. And that was just a net increase of around point, almost a million dollars. And it was mainly federal income and TRS on behalf. And the TRS on behalf is mainly due to the raises that are being proposed. Okay, so our budget will actually go down $464,000. And the way we're going to do that is through ESR, as I go through. Okay, on the payroll and benefits, we're going to have an agenda item on this after I finish. But we are, last, this past year, we gave a stop-in, a retention stop-in. And that was, I had budgeted around 3.6 million, I believe. And so we're shifting that into raises. So we had 3.6 million in the budget. So what we are proposing to do, because we've been looking at Longview, Bullard, White House, we are going to raise our teacher and RN base pay to 48,750. Right now, it's 44,250, but this would put us at the top unless they raise it again, once they see that we want to raise ours.
We're the first rattle out of the box, so then they'll go and, they'll go 48,751.
But it's actually, yeah, they will. They'll, I suspect that'll happen.
Thanks, Stan. Thanks, Chris, if you're watching.
And it's, it varies. The teacher raises vary based on your experience because we wanted to get to 50,000 as quick as we could, and we're higher than people getting to 50,000. At year five, you're going to be at 50,000 on a higher-end schedule. If you're, if we continue to give raises every year, you'll obviously surpass that. But, so you'll see later when we go through that agenda item. Some teachers are going to get $4,700, some are going to get 4,900, based on where they are on the chart. The younger, zero to five-year will have larger raises. And we're going to cap teacher pay at 70,000, which that's high compared to everyone else. But we, we're going to have to cap it in order to afford this. Now, everyone will get a raise this year. There's nobody there yet, but they will be in a year or two. But they have a, they will still get, if they're bilingual teacher, they'll get that stop-in. Math, science, they get a stop-in. If they have a master's or a PhD, they get a stop-in. Plus, they're eligible for TIA incentive if they want to do that. So that's what we're proposing with that. And then the other employees will get a 3% of the midpoint. And then we're raising bus driver, their minimum hourly rate to $18 per hour, which is about $1.36 per hour. And that's around $300,000 to $400,000 alone. And the health insurance maximum guarantees going up 10%. So that's part of the use. And then we will have an increase in transportation overtime because we had the base pay increase. And then TRS expense and on behalf will increase because of the raises. So that's an increase of around 3.5 million dollars for all the payroll. Other expenditures, and these are departments, and they're on pages 13 and through 15 in the agenda. ESR 2 allows you to have the one-to-one devices, ESR 3, ESR 3, allows you to have one-to-one devices. And I budget $2 million in general fund for that. So we're going to shift that out to ESR 3, which is helping us with the raises. And then bus purchases, I'm not sure yet. I was sitting in a webinar the other day that said they can't go in ESR 3, but maybe ESR 2, or else we'll just buy them with general fund leftover, if we can't do that. Last year, we had bought instruments and kilns. And so that's a decrease in the budget. That was a one-time purchase last year. Campus allotment decrease was minor. And then we had around the $800,000 budget for special projects. Well, we don't need that because we have ESR funding for that. So that was a decrease of 4.1 million. On to departments, we have, these are not really big increases, they're kind of small. It's just $158,000 on departmental. And so our expenditure decrease net is $464,000. So it'll be a balanced budget. We're able to get the raise in because we can move some of those things to ESR 3. Plus, we hired, you'll hear a report on ESR 3 pretty soon, I'm sure. But any new positions we had, mostly related to improving student achievement, those were able to go, and learning loss, those were able to be fit into ESR 3. So there weren't really a lot of salary adds to this budget. It's pretty easy and straightforward. Do y'all have any questions on it?
One item. Remember this time last year, 2020, 2020 dash 2021 project with our staffing. So we did lean up a lot because this time last year, we didn't know. The comptroller, comptroller had come out and was pretty doom and gloom about the economy's impact. And I know some of y'all on this dais here were very concerned about that, too. So we were pretty conservative in doing that. We were not going back and adding those. So some of those, some of the opportunities that we have in here is because of the work we did last year. It's going to pay off to where we got leaner. I call it the more of the mid-management level where we could have leaned up a little bit, that we were kind of carrying those same numbers all the way back to 2011. Well, no, 20-
Not that.
200, yeah, 2009 stimulus. Well, 11 is when the state cut us, but 2009 was whenever the recession stimulus came, and we really grew our curriculum department. And so that's where we could, you know, forward through attrition, being able to do some of that. So we're kind of reaping the benefits of the work we did last-
For sure.
-budget this year to be able to provide our, our teaching staff. What we're thinking is probably going to be a consecutive seventh, eighth, and ninth, or excuse me, eighth, ninth, and 10th year of consecutive raises. We're not promising that because it's hard to make a three-year budget with the state. But it looks like that we've got a good opportunity here to do 10 consecutive years. This is, the proposal is going to be an eighth consecutive year, so.
Question. I, I really hadn't been into the budget the first year. So I'm just beginning to venture into there. Had a question on page 12 about the campus budgets. And I was looking at the amount they get per student and the total amount, budgeted amount. Now, is that, that's not the only money that that campus receives, right? This is based off of something else?
They, this is general fund money that they use for just general supplies, things like that. They get Title I funding, which is the bigger, larger amount. And the bottom line, too, is that we pay for most large things for the campuses.
Okay.
Most technology we pay for. You know, they don't have to pay their utilities, anything like that. We do all that. So it's just basically operating expenses for their campus.
Like the principal's budget or whatever that they-
Yes, travel, that type of thing.
Okay.
And if they have overtime, if they, things like that, it's basically just to operate their budget.
Tasha, speak to how we kind of compare amongst other school systems about per-student expenditures.
Well, we're pretty equal, or maybe even a little higher. But it's more at the high schools because they have extracurricular. So this pays for any trips they take or competitions, unless it's athletics or fine arts. Those departments pay for those usually.
And do we usually use all that money? That, I'm sure it varies from school to school.
The campuses?
Right.
Most of them, not everyone does. Some of them spend every dime and more.
They love getting to April and May.
Yeah, I'm sure, like, yeah, like most budgets.
And a lot of them do so in preparation for, you know, little startup resources for next year. So they may buy some materials that are going to be used.
They generally do.
We try not to do a lot of that, but we keep a pretty good eye on that to where if somebody's just blowing through, blow through without purpose, that's not allowed.
And if they over-spend, it comes out of their next year's budget.
Oh, really?
So there's always that.
Yes, that's always fun to deal with, being a former principal. I understand the-
Comes out of next year.
Because otherwise, there's no accountability.
Right, that's true. And then the last question, and one of my interests is custodial staff in regards to their, their, and I didn't, I didn't see anything in here regards to anything, salary increase, anything of that nature. And I've talked to Mr. Loper about some things and-
They did. I didn't mention it on here, but we did raise the base on them. I believe the $10 an hour, which it was 9.55, I want to say.
Okay, okay, in relation to that. Now, we talked about like a PRN, well, I talked about with Mr. Loper, about something like a PRN pool or substitute pool like that for teachers, where if a custodian's out for a day or something, you can have a source that you can pull in. Because I, I talk about this because when I'm visiting the campuses, a lot of days, you know, the campus that have four custodians, they'll be down to two. And it's a struggle to clean, especially this past year with COVID. And so I, I was concerned about that when I go to those campuses and there's only two custodians there. And we talked to Mr. Loper about it, and we talked about the possibility of doing something similar to a PRN pool of custodians. So if one's out, like you do a teacher, you can call that person and see if they can work and fill in that day. I know a lot of times now what they do is, my understanding is, they pull somebody from one of the other campuses after they finish up, and they go to another campus and help. But I was wondering if it's a possibility of looking at something from that perspective to, so they wouldn't have to pull somebody-
They can look at it.
And, and, you know, and have them do-
They can look at it. I don't know if they can find anybody because it's hard to find people to be a custodian.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think finding people to plug the vacancies that we have obviously takes precedence. And you'd think if those individuals want to do that, then if we had enough individuals to do that, that you'd be able to do that. And then you could actually create the subpool. I do think with what you're seeing with the, some of the COVID funding for unemployment, the extra $300 a month going away. It's going to spur people to want to work. We've seen that in bus drivers. I've talked to other school districts, the same thing with custodial staff, food service workers, and even substitute teachers.
Yeah.
So I think that you're going to maybe see a recovery on being able to do some creative things like that. Like you said, you finish your work at one place, and you go to another location. Now, we were, we did compensate them above their-
Yeah, for a period.
Above their, we didn't get a lot of participation on that.
Can you blame them this past year? I wouldn't either.
Well, I agree. But I think that that's, that's a, a strategy that's not a bad strategy if you want, if you want to make money. And I'm hoping that we can continue to have that as a strategy to go to. Now that things have relaxed a little bit, I hope that people will take advantage of that as well. So I think there's a lot of different approaches on this. That's, the subpool's a good idea, too.
Well, we have floaters. We have, like, I think she has four floaters, and she can't even keep those full. So, I mean, you, if you can't keep those full-
I do think that having a sub custodian on call that doesn't want to work every day-
Right, and I think there are people out there-
Can be a strategy. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Just wondering how that-
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Are we good? Okay, moving on, we do have a couple of action items. One is to consider approval of compensation structure for 21 and 22 school year. Need discussion on that?
This actually gets us going on the budget. So obviously, we're people-heavy. 85% of our expenditures are in people. So once y'all take action on this, it allows us to start building the budget even-
Well, it also allows us to start advertising because right now, you don't want to lose teachers. If they know they're going to get this, maybe they'll stay. And it also helps with recruiting. If we have it now versus waiting till August.
Okay, great, I'll go-
Once school's started.
Of course. Are we right in line with other districts in regards to this?
Yes, what we're, we're constantly trying to, want to, our goal is to get as close, you know, we look at the east side of the metroplex like Fornie and Terrell. We are competitive within East Texas. There's a lot of districts in East Texas that are at state base. But when you start talking about your Longviews, your White House, your Lindells-
Well, Lindell's 38,000, they're state-based.
So there you go. We're in alignment, if not surpassing.
And I think, did we find out Fornie was 52, 53? So we're 48,750 is getting-
We're getting close.
In our insurances.
Yeah, that's, that's another thing that we always want to say publicly, since the media's here today and we're on Channel 19. Remember, when you work at Tyler ISD, your back pocket, if you participate in our insurance program, because we are self-funded, versus a TRS-insured district, which I believe we're the, are we the only one in East Texas?
Of all these, yes.
Of all the ones in East Texas, it could mean anywhere more. Your take-home, in your back pocket annually, $12,000 to $16,000 more if you're on the right plan. It's hard to talk to that with, with newbies, the first-year teacher out of college. They may not understand how, they also may not have a family yet. But once you start acquiring a family, it's pretty significant to work here versus some of our satellite school systems.
The premiums are getting a little closer, but one thing I was looking at, we'll be bringing this either in July or August, I don't remember when. But just the deductibles are so different. Like, one plan that's comparable, our deductible or maximum out-of-pocket will be 3,000, and that one's 8,000, or the deductibles, 500 versus 1,500. So it's even that much more you're out of pocket.
Yeah, and that'll be a discussion item for the board and the district in future years because they got pretty close this legislative session to opening up the state again for choosing whether or not you're going to be self-funded or not. Now, it's not as easy as everybody thinks it is, but at the same time, it is an advantage for us right now, even though- Even though they're trying to make those premiums down a little bit, it's still advantageous for us over TRS.
They added some more plans is what they did. They still have this higher one, but then they added some more.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item A.
Move to approve the compensation structure for 21-22.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries. Now we're moving on to item B, which is consider approval of amendment to the Head Start grant for the 2021 school year.
These are annual items. B and C here are. You can act separately on those. Dr. Hanson, is there anything that you need to alert us on, on the amendment, other than this is routine as we start tying up the loose ends of this fiscal for the Head Start grant? Nothing the board needs to, okay. Is COVID, a little COVID? Okay.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item B.
I move that we approve item B.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
As have it, motion carries. And going on to item C, consider approval of Head Start annual report to the public.
Again, this, this is annual report that we provide. It's in your, provided in your packet. If you have any questions about that, you're more than welcome to contact us. Brandy Holland can give you more, a more detailed report about that as we're working on the, well, improvement plan for next, or not improvement plan, but the plan for next year as well. So if you have any interest in that, please contact us and we'll get you in touch with Brandy Holland.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion on item C.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries. Well, thanks everybody for coming out today. We're at the point of the meeting where we adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.